September. Go over September eighth. Meeting of the whole. We'll call.
Mr. Caprosa. Mr. Livermore. Mr. Middleton. Mr. Rondo.
Here.
Mr. Seaver.
Here.
But allegiance to the. And great parents.
White House allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under uh. Any individual with a free. No public, so that's gone. Everybody okay with the agenda?
Consensus.
Consensus.
Yes.
Six. Free removal. You have, those are three bids.
Four.
Four. I'm gonna couple that with polls together there.
I think there's a committee we had. Chosen uh. Went on a Newberry. Known in.
Thirty seven hundred dollars. And that is they were going to would remove, they're gonna remove everything. Chip it in a box, so that's gone, everything's. Total cleanup. They take everything out. Next this. That's committee recommendation thirty seven.
I'd say consensus.
I would say consensus too, do. Keenoin, I can pronounce it tree servicing. Keenoin, out of Newberry. Consensus on that, number seven. Uh, appointment for the. Board of Camisters, the Democratic. They sent us one, we have to take theirs.
That can be.
Consensus on that? Consensus, champion. Number eight, Republican.
Doctor Dan.
I don't see there's any.
Uh, DeKalb.
Was it in that?
Yeah.
You think the reaction can't be filed or not?
It is online.
Yep, they do.
Oh, yep.
Consensus.
Consensus.
Yeah.
Number nine, the library board vacancies. They're gonna have to put it over.
Yeah.
Consensus.
Consensus.
Number ten, D H H S four notice vacancy. Put that out.
Who's leaving? Oh, it's just marrying, okay.
I think we, yeah. We're just putting it out.
Yeah.
Consensus.
Consensus.
Um, number twelve.
You skipped number eleven.
Consensus. Well, I wish I could stay. With regret. And consensus on number eleven, presentation of Rick.
Corrected September thirty.
Uh huh.
September thirty.
September thirty?
Yep.
Yeah.
So you'll be here next meeting.
Mm hmm.
So. Consensus. Okay, number twelve. Advertise to fill Rick's position.
That's good.
That's district one. Census.
Yeah.
Yep.
Thirteen. Media list review. We have to put anybody on that right now though.
Pathways is the only one I think maybe that.
That needs somebody.
Are you gonna attend this month?
Yeah, I'll be going this one.
So it might not even matter if the next person didn't.
Right, we'll just. Put them right into all their. In his place at that point.
Yeah, he just has the pathways on.
Uh, consensus to do that then, just to. Whoever. Builds that seat will take all Rick's. Committees.
Yep.
Uh, number fourteen.
Or if they like anymore, they can always take more. Just saying. They might want.
I think that person might really like camp.
Just don't tell them all of it.
Well, I mean, like. I know that I have the prison liaison which you usually go to.
Yeah.
And.
Well, they've, they've only invited us once in a while in the last two years, so.
We just got, I, I got.
I know, but I couldn't make it.
Oh. And anyway, so like that could be one if they wanted to take, like, there's a few other that, you know, we wanted to share the wealth a little bit. Since I'm starting a whole new committee, maybe they could take one off my plate. We'll have that conversation.
Uh, conference, I won't be here. If anybody else. October sixteenth and seventeenth, it looks like.
Um, I think that I was looking, going to that one.
Thursday and Friday. Mickey?
I don't, I could be in Florida, so I don't know. I'll have to think it over.
No, that's, you ain't leaving till after the.
Will you be in Florida the twentieth?
No, no, I don't think so. No, and I'm, I'm, I'll make them meetings.
So you're gonna go between the thirteenth and twentieth, you're gonna go to.
Summer night in there.
That's a quick trip.
I don't like to be down there when it's hot. Uh, put me down for Harrison, right?
I'm gonna do this one. My husband has that.
Yeah, um, I'm not, do any year old vacancy if you want to. I'm not staying, no, no.
I'm staying. My husband has a night off. Did I say that already?
So he stayed home with the kids and you're.
I'm like, can I bring a guest? It's my sister's birthday that night too. Come have dinner with me. Teach her some things.
MSU service agreement, oh, we got a consensus on that conference. Send up to three, up to three.
Yeah.
Oh, wait, no, that, mm. The new person's gonna be voted in.
Oh, they moved.
Maybe. What do you?
There is the cut.
That's for the early registration, isn't it? Oh, you're.
Uh, I guess you could do it right until last minute.
Thursday and then.
Like we could do.
Yeah, after October thirteen, the cost increased to a hundred and fifty after October third.
Which is odd.
Alright, so, um, I would say. Up to four. Consensus up to four?
Yep.
Just in case that person wants to. Number fifteen. Service agreement.
That's a million, so we have to, right?
Yeah. Point five. Nails. MSU. Census.
Yeah.
Yep, alright, question first, I guess.
I think I had heard that there's another county that cut off from MSU recently, you know which county was?
We have a lot in the Eldred County with MSU.
Yeah, but there's another one in another county, I don't know if it's Dickinson.
It might have been Dickinson, not exactly.
Yeah, and they pulled out from MSU extension up there. Recently, they didn't renew it. Like they do a lot of good.
Four H program.
Yeah.
Yeah. Important.
Right.
But that's a millage that covers that, right? We can't very well pull out of a millage.
That is a village. You got, you got to pull the village down.
Yeah, yeah. Um, number sixteen, schedule of public hearing for the C D B G funding. Any questions on that? Census.
Census.
Consensus. Number seventeen, foreclosures government unit report for. Uh, you see this, Pam's report. Any questions on that?
Just the required yearly report, the state. Makes us do. On the twenty twenty-three foreclosures that I had.
Oh, okay, I was like twenty twenty-three.
Yeah. So far behind they do it everywhere.
Census.
Yeah.
Yes. Rating. Cost savings ideas, revenue sources. Find more money. They have more money. Ideas. Part-time grant writer. Grants are gonna get, though they already are tighter and more, uh. Challenging. But I still believe there's a lot older that we could benefit from. If we had somebody. To have some time for that. Okay, nothing there, any unfinished, finished business? Financial matters, board bills. Financial report for all funds appropriations and amendments to transfers, any questions on those? We did them immediately, I believe, at committee, everything looked good. Consensus.
Census.
Do we have, we have. Resolutions. Now, is that where we put the, uh? The stuff from. Tony's Schoolcraft?
We've done so, please, just probably shut that off.
Correspondence, what's under correspondence? And we have no resolutions then, we do that. Committee reports.
Go, Mike.
How was that L M A S today and they're. They're scrambling, they think they're gonna lose quite a few grants. What do you like to kindergarten? Um. Sight and hearing and, uh, their, their teeth. They figure they're gonna lose that.
Well, I bring that up, I think about. Almost a year ago, asked. Them if they think they're gonna have any problem with money income. And they said, no, 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 we're good, we got every hour, our time, they're, uh. They had budget today, which. You picked a good one to leave, by the way, not go to. Anyway, we're on the budget, but they don't know what they're getting from the state or from the feds. So they can't, you know, really make a budget. And. With no new cars this year and there's something else they can't do this year if they know what it was. But. They're, they're afraid they're gonna get caught.
I think that's been pretty fast there anyways.
Yeah, they say eighty-five, uh, employees there. A lot of people.
Um, Mike's not here and with the changes and everything for the airport, we have that fly-in for all the kids and everything. Do you know what numbers or any info on that?
Helpful, now they, they never even have a chance to make it up there.
They switched it from Saturday to Sunday and I couldn't make it on Sunday, it was just. Thing, and they changed it, what, two weeks before that, they had changed it, why did they change, do you know why they switched? Oh, it's like it's beautiful on Saturday though, too.
Wind.
All the wind.
Oh, yeah, yeah, she wouldn't be.
I was like, darn. That's when I was wondering, hoping for an update, see where we were at, because we had how many kids last year?
We had more than Marquette last year.
Yeah, but I was wondering if we had the same amount of people come with the changes in time and dates.
I was a bride today, two graves, I never thought about that one.
I know, I've seen a lot of people, a lot of my friends, their kids my age and stuff, they all went out and had fun. Um, Q pad, uh, I had them. We are. Um, dealing with losing the. The G I S. Mapping, we just hired, uh, that Jessica Walter, and she's leaving. Due to, um, just, they don't pay her enough. Um, she just can't make it work anymore again, so. Um.
Are they looking for somebody for that?
So now we're looking to fill that position again.
High line bridge, he does that on the side, I know.
Does he? Well, I know that.
Do you own the business?
We just put out the, um. They're putting out the. Thing for them to be hiring and then, um.
It's Q pad.
Yep. Yep, and then, um. Otherwise, everything seems to be just. Going along with them and then the waste management. They. Were dealing with. Dickinson wanting to pull out or hasn't paid their dues. Um, they're actually trying to go towards something different, Penguin, they're called. So we have a woman, um, one of the old commissioners is on the board, but. We don't know what's going on with them yet, they might be pulling out, so it might be only a five.
Should we look at this too, Penguin?
No.
No?
In my opinion, no.
Okay.
No, from what I've been told and everything, it's not. And it's not gonna fix what the state wants us to do.
I'm wondering why they're doing it though.
I'm. I'm not sure. It sounds good, the way that they're, I guess they take plastic and they melt it down and then turn it into that, but then they're gonna barge in. All of that stuff, because we don't even have enough in the U P to run it. And there's no funding or anything to build it, so it all has to come out of your pocket as the county, so. We're still having conversation with Dickinson, because with the new board that came in and everything. They're kind of up in. Not really sure what's going on, I think. There's been a lot of not great communication, so. Right now. We know five are in, we're good, but that sixth one Dickinson might be pulling out and they haven't paid any dues thus far, so. They don't really have anything to add. And then.
Maybe Dickinson is smart, that's what I'm wondering, what they do, what they do, what they're doing right now with the veterans state. Now they're, you. Give those funds and grants, now they're take, kinda taking them back, so it's becoming an unfunded mandate. And is this what this is gonna turn out to be?
Right.
This happened, I don't know how many times I've been on this board.
Well. From the small research they've done, the other facilities that they have built haven't lasted a full year.
Before we went under.
They couldn't afford it anymore in other states.
What's?
And they're taking from Wisconsin.
Yeah, they figure what's it's gonna cost us, Elder County residents yet?
No, because we're still trying to figure out who's gonna do what. And Marquette's got like everything they need, Delta County has like two-thirds of what they need.
Elder County has nothing.
And we have nothing, so we're trying to figure out.
We have the dump.
But they're not even on our list of people. That. Are having a conversation.
I just don't wanna. See Elder County paying all these other counties to take care of their stuff.
Right, well, and then we have.
Comes also, we need to build our own, maybe that's what we need to do.
Paul Whitmarsh. He's having conversations with the waste management to. Find out what we can do over here, because he does that for that area. So. Lot of conversations, we're sending out a survey. Hopefully by the end of October and we'll have answers to what people can afford, what they want, what they don't want. To know how to move forward.
Because Elder County right now. Would it looks like they're gonna force us to do all this recycling, that we're gonna be paying other counties to do. But yet. Every county in other states bring all their garbage to our corner. So, you know, and I think we might wanna look at that.
Oh, it's where I'm at over there is finding out all that, I'm still catching up from when Mick had taken my spot there for a little bit. So he just had sent me everything and I'm slowly reading through, but right now we're working on the survey to find out what people need.
Elder County is the central of all this. So maybe we can be the central hub to.
But Marquette has so much already implemented, that's where. Because they're actually saying we could totally be not a part of this and do it ourselves and you guys could go on your own, so. That would be helpful, that we wouldn't have to build all of that stuff, because they already have it.
Yeah, and is now, if we get a new governor. It's just all gonna be gone and wayside.
Well, at least we're not that far into it, right?
Thus, yeah.
We're just having conversations and surveys right now.
This was mandated by state, which downstate, yeah, which is good for them, not always good for us.
Right. As far as land bank and. Brownfield, we haven't had a brownfield in a bit, but land bank, um, we sold. We had that one property, Pam in Chatham. And that went and that put quite a bit back into our land bank, so. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you for supporting and putting things back in the next roll. So, yeah, I, it was a pretty good, so, and then as far as the. Marketplace, that seems to be rolling in the right direction, so we should have an update, I didn't make it to the one. So maybe when her staff comments comes, she can comment on that. So. There we go.
Oh, good.
Hmm.
Did you get a chance, hopefully?
Oh, we're.
Him?
No.
Just go with what we got.
We're going with what we got.
I'm gonna send that email.
Oh, I thought you were gonna send it on Friday.
I was waiting to see maybe.
You said too that we were pretty much maxed out and I was like, you know what, it's not a big deal if we don't have somebody from Pathways. I think that we could leave that space open for anybody else in the community. I didn't know, did you hear from Monica or it was Cassandra? Was the one, she hasn't returned. Uh, email back from me either, which is fine, now let me ask some pathways, but we have plenty of other, we have Great Lakes Recovery, we have our drop-in center. Hospital.
Jeff.
Yeah, Jeff, so we have quite a list, I think we have.
Okay, name on?
Yeah.
You.
Yeah, he's gonna be on it, and then we should have that first meeting. October third, I think it was.
October thirty.
Yeah, in the evening. After public poses. And all the businesses are done, so we can sit down and start having that conversation and get that money to Michelle. That she says she needs to start those programs and who see fit. Still. Oh, I'm busy.
Mickey, anything else to do?
No.
I didn't have any. Rick? None?
Nope.
Correspondent. We have a couple from Schoolcraft. Regarding our judge, we're hauling. All right, we get a chance to read that. Um, I would think that, uh. Elder County should write the same thing.
So. For the coverage, the only reason I didn't end up doing that in our personnel policy, it says. During an, and it specifies an unpaid. And he is on.
I believe it should be unpaid.
I start with, I know, and because I, I figured, uh, I did talk to Macta. So. Um, between Schoolcraft and Macta. I was hoping maybe we could just let them. Have the fight and.
You know, the page three, is he asking for paid?
He was granted paid.
Well, he was.
Yeah.
Okay, wow.
Granted leave of absence.
Yeah, I didn't.
A fee. It didn't say hey, it just says leave of absence. It wasn't a. Um, administrative leave, it wasn't paid leave, it was leave of absence. And I couldn't find anywhere in there, meet anywhere with state of Michigan or anything where a leave of absence is paid. They can have administrative leave, and there's different terms under administrative leave with. Calt for administratively. What he's off for does not count for administrative relief, which would be paid leave. But. I just look at it as, um, he is voted in by the. People and he voted in to do a job. Do a job or resign, that's my two bits. You know, he's. Costing us money to not do a job. I believe every elected official. Should do their job, they're, yeah, they have the right to. They're at will employee, but you don't just leave for two months, you don't leave for two months. We as board members don't just leave. Rick decides he can, so he's gonna resign, is because he can't do it. Um. That's what, if you can't do the job, then resign. And don't sit there and lay this on and have the county is costing all taxpayers more money to do this. So, that's my two bits, anybody else got any questions or comments?
Who granted him that, um, paid leave or?
Leave of absence.
Chief Judge Gibson. Which is a sixty days, so he should be coming back the twenty-second.
He's requested to come back. He requested to come back the third. The third of this month.
So he's back.
I don't. The administrative. Uh, the, the, the facts of it are he requested to come back on the third. I've prosecutor's office here in Elder County has since filed a motion to disqualify from criminal cases. So that. Guess return has been delayed. We have, today we have a visiting judge and we'll have another, we'll have the visiting judge again on the twenty-third. Those disqualification motions will be heard on the twenty-fourth.
There's a Wednesday, I believe, twenty-fourth.
At what time, they got a time on?
They do, I think it's, uh, let me just verify.
Is this something we can look at next month?
Ten, ten fifteen.
I wanna let this play out.
I think so, we don't have, unless somebody else has any. Questions or wants to do anything, we can make that.
Got more to work with next month.
Yeah.
The disqualification motions, there were dozens of them filed in Macta, not given. And, um, they're, they're pending a ruling on that. So I think that'll be tough.
How long, do you have any idea how long rulings take or?
Uh, it's, I would, I mean, Judge Riley heard, he heard the cases themselves, so I would expect it to be very soon. Probably within the next few days.
Any questions on that?
I hope for this time.
Yeah, uh, any more correspondence?
Then you also have a resolution from Marion County, uh, supportive of Senate bills. Uh, two ninety-three, twenty-four. Effectively create a bond or forfeit process that would apply to animals seized due to a pending or an active court case. Now, we get further and we neglect. And you have the Elder County Solarise flyer. Number eighteen.
I'm going to that.
I was gonna go to that. I, uh, actually went to it.
Last time?
No, I showed up, uh, to each.
Oh.
I went up there.
We went August eighteenth.
So I went there and I, I talked to Lisa for a while about, what did she give me? About what they have on their records for how much. Their solar's been providing them and that. It wasn't enough for me to. Put it up. Miles, so.
Yeah.
This resolution here. The Senate Bill. Two ninety-three and two ninety-four. Do we want? Do one also for Elder County.
We don't have that.
Well, we don't have a place right now.
Well, this, yeah. We have nowhere to put them. It just be a su- support to the bill. It'd just be a su- support to the bill.
Yeah.
Do we wanna support that bill?
I would say so, I mean, if you have an animal that's being neglected and not given care of, they, while they're going through. All of the court stuff, that animal shouldn't stay there. That's what this is saying, correct?
Or they have to take a bond?
Create an effective bond or forfeit process that would buy them.
Am I getting it right, that they would have to get a bond on that animal, just to be able to keep it?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I think your reading is right, and Alger, we, uh, we. We generally end run this by seizing the animal as a piece of evidence. And the problem with that is, we got, we're able to do that, because we can move more quicker than a lot of other counties, but um. If you seize the animal as evidence of neglect, and then the animal gets healthy in your shelter. It's no longer of the evidentiary value, because it's not neglected.
But if you let the people have them and it disappears, then you have no evidence at all.
Yeah, we've had that before, actually, yeah, so generally our judges are um. Have been receptive to ordering that they not possess, the defendant in this case not possess animals for the, I didn't say the case. But you can't, you're not gonna get that every time either, that's, that can come under challenge.
On prosecutor's side, what would be the best for the county to do?
Yeah, I don't think we heard anything by supporting this bill, um, here, uh, but I I've. We're.
What works for us is working.
Yeah, we're done, we don't even have to go down this road usually, because. They're the animal seized, we have, so we can just.
You could not even do it.
You could do that too, no?
Make a recommendation that we just. Table it, table that one, or not even table it, just um, even bring it to. So, the bottom news, board comments? At the end of correspondence?
Yes.
Oh, we got the solar thing, yeah, okay. And we went over that September eighteenth. Kelly, board comments?
I'll just say, what makes you? I'll tell, I'll make sure to let Henry know who he's named after.
Maggie? Um, I I don't know if I said this last time or not, last time I was on Mac. We're cutting fifty-three million dollars off the uh, uh, revenue sharing. So, that goes to each county, for all it's gonna cost Elder County, but. There's a cut coming down revenue sharing, so, just so you know. And. My sympathies are with you, right, sorry about that. You're a good man.
Behind every. Good woman, there's a good man.
Great one.
I just made that.
Behind every great woman, a good man.
Every little sexist thing.
Uh, next staff comments? So, or Rick, you wanna comment?
I was just wondering.
You got next week, two years.
Yeah, oh, I was just wondering, I mentioned, uh, uh, wasn't it Graham Ray? And should he maybe come to the board meeting?
Well, he should, he has to put in a letter of interest. And then, uh, yeah, he should come to a meeting.
Yeah, if he comes next week, he can have conversations, we can talk to him, ask him any questions if we have any.
Just to let him know that these ain't the only meetings he has to come to, they come with a whole mess of other things.
Yeah, and I uh, I'm gonna print that off and give it to him, he might know, yeah. Actually, there's a couple people over there that would be very well for that, over time.
I like hearing that you have interest over there in being out and.
Yeah, yeah, because you are responsible to fill your seat. Noel?
Uh, I'm starting wrapping up for the little city commissioner election, we got a couple villages in Grand Island. On the small side, other than that, I submitted for the materials management grant. The Cupad fees and. I guess we'll see if they reimburse what they says they were going to. Other than that, that's about it.
I got a question for you, so, and his replacement. When will his, uh, when will he be, uh, elected again?
We're gonna talk about that next, you wanted to talk about that?
Sure.
So, because. You can't vote on your own replacement. And President Seaver isn't gonna be here for the full board meeting. Next week, I was gonna put it on the agenda for you to discuss bypassing the board policy, normally we would nominate that the committee in the whole. Vote nominated, we want to the full board to vote. But it will be down to probably just three, and in the event that something comes up. It is time sensitive, but if would, I think, be.
If one out of the three couldn't make it, we wouldn't have a committee.
Right.
So if you vote at. The committee in the whole, because you'll review everything at the committees on the seventh anyway. And then, they can be here in person on the committee hole, and have more. More votes.
So on October seventh, is when we would vote on?
Thirteen, the, yeah. The Monday, the first of June. Things are there too.
Yeah.
Thirteenth, yeah.
That's.
Longest day.
That's the second Monday then, right?
That's the second Monday.
Yeah, the first meeting, the first committee hole, right, do it all in one shot, you can reaffirm it on the twentieth. That's the board, but. But it would be nice to have four votes.
Because you won't be here.
That makes it to where on twentieth, it's just gonna be. Mike and you two, and if any one of you three couldn't make it.
Comes down to the worst case of schools back in session sickness.
Well, that's what I'm saying, it could be, if we did it on the thirteenth, we have a better chance of all four. Boy members being here. And then the twenty, twentieth, he could actually sit and make a vote, and we would've.
Just reaffirm or not?
Yeah, I'm gonna take this.
Alright.
We can put it on the agenda for Monday, we'll discuss that.
So the 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 meeting in the hole on uh, October is what date, thirteenth?
Thirteen.
I don't like that one, I did. It's Friday. I can beat that to you.
It's a Monday.
Little superstitious there. Anything else, Noel?
Robbie, anything?
Uh, just a couple things, we're following the state budget pretty closely, the um. Big cuts in the first round were to the state police and the Attorney General's office. So that's something that my office is following very diligently, because the Attorney General immediately came out and said the. Things that she'd be looking to cut are to to make up for the the cuts would be. Um, their appellate services, which they do for our our county. As well as the prosecution right now in Lake County that they're filling in for in the absence of an elected prosecutor, so. I've been leaning on our legislators to try and get a budget done and settled, um, I'm hoping they do before the deadline. Our office is very, very busy right now, we're handling criminal matters, administrative matters. That's taking up a lot of our time, but we're weathering the storm and I'm confident that we'll get through it.
On the state police budget, I do, we was listening to that right, that they're only cutting the money that they haven't used. Because they have a hundred some thousand jobs that have never been filled. So they're not putting that money in their budget this time, they're taking that out, because right now they're putting in that budget, it's getting used for other things and not actual. So nobody's gonna get laid off in the state police. They're just not giving them the money for jobs that are not filled.
That was also my understanding too.
Yeah.
But. Be that as a, hey, they need to figure it out, all of them do.
Yes.
I was told, I don't, I don't know if this was true. But the last time they got close to a shutdown in the state level, this happens at the federal all the time, the state level. They deemed some of the D O T workers are not essential, the ones that run the draw bridges. So the, when the government shut down, the state government, they just lifted all the bridges and went home. And then they they had a budget, they had a budget in four hours after that. I I just think, I think that's creative.
You're elected, do your job. And they should be doing their job and balance the budget is one of our jobs. We have to do it. Yeah, we do, they gotta have these two people that's.
Yeah.
You know, playing games with revenue sharing every time, getting. We have to agree on our budget by a certain date. But they don't have to do it, uh, but how how can we do it, we don't know how much money we're getting, so it's.
That's what L M A S was saying today, right?
Frustrating.
Yep.
You can only guess.
Thank you. Pam?
Well, actually, revenue sharing is part, is supposed to be the money coming from all the income, our tax money.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I don't know how they cut that.
They were trying to force their hand, so there wasn't a political.
They're helping us. No public comment? Consensus?